Mr. Townsend, would you be able to lead us in the community prayer?
Sure. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. First item on our agenda as usual is citizens' participation. Would anyone like to come up and address the board? Seeing no one approach the mic, the next item on our agenda is a request for a common victrola license for The Good Bird at 144 South Main Street. Is there anyone like to come up and speak on that?
Agent?
Sure.
Yeah. You may need to bring the mic close to you.
Just state your name and address and give us a little bit of background of what you're trying to do.
My name is Daniel Smith. I'm at 267 Tremont Street in Carver. I'm opening up a restaurant at 145 South Main, right across the way from the old Smokehouse there. Yeah, that's it.
And what type of a...
It's a restaurant.
Restaurant? What type of food do you visit?
All takeout food. We have no seats inside. It's gonna be all poultry products, hence the name, The Good Bird.
I'm sorry, could you just speak up a little?
Yeah, so we're gonna be doing all takeout.
Okay.
It's gonna be all chicken, turkey products. We'd like to get seats in the future, but to start, there's gonna be no seating.
Is that why that building was being renovated?
There's multiple different things going on in there where we're doing a renovation plan.
That's great, thank you.
They're across from the old Smokehouse, but is somebody renovating the Smokehouse, too?
Yeah, it's a brewery.
A brewery?
Yep.
You'd be right next to the Fish on South Main?
Right next to the dog grooming. So there's a unit between me and Fish on Main, but we're right next door to the dog groomer.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
I don't know. I'll make a motion to approve?
A second. I have a motion, I have a second. Any other questions, issues or concerns?
You probably know to go to the Board of Health.
Yeah, for our final inspection, yeah, I've spoken. We have all our permits going, yeah. Thank you.
All right then, all those in favor of granting the common victrola license, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, 611, we have 610, we've got Eversource. Is there anyone from Eversource here to talk about the poll hearing?
Of course not.
They didn't notify us that they wouldn't be here?
No.
All right then.
Do we want a motion to continue the hearing, or do you just wanna recontact them?
Well, we never opened it.
That's true.
So, do we need to just do nothing?
So if you open it and postpone it, we won't have to pay for another mailing for notification?
Another mailing to a Butters?
Right.
Okay.
But we will do another mailing to a Butters based on the next date.
If you open the hearing and continue it publicly, you don't need to do that. You can just pick the next meeting date and time.
Then we probably should.
Yeah.
We should mail.
We should.
I would think we should not open it.
Yeah, I agree.
Let people know.
Okay.
We should certainly let people know, absolutely.
All right, so we're not gonna open the meeting. All right, next item on the agenda...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, so we're not opening it?
If I understood correctly, if we do not open it, then when it gets rescheduled, we'll be sending a notification to residents so they know what date to show up.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Let's see, 620, the next item is to, we're gonna be a little bit earlier tonight, to review the overall plan for the pickleball construction, including the council on aging parking requirements. Is there someone here that would like to come up and inform the board the current status? Mr. Townsend, I believe you had some concerns about this the other day?
My only concern, and you know, I'm in favor of all the projects down there, the pickleball, I think is great. I think the adjacent property that we bought, the conservation property, that I think we're gonna work on some hiking trails or walking trails over there, I think that's wonderful. I certainly support the council on aging and always have. My only concern, and I've expressed this to Mr. Seidenhoff and the town administrator, is I would like to see some type of professional, drawn parking plan for the area, so that when the pickleball court is open and the council on aging's open, we can court, there's plenty of parking for everybody. That's my only concern with the property.
Good evening. So as Mr. Townsend expressed, currently in the plans, which are actually, right now they're looking at breaking ground, and while the ground's been broken, but setting up some survey stakes for the engineer to come out and survey next week. They're going to, so the asphalt will be done, there was some change in the surfacing, but the project will be, we'll call it 90% completed this fall. The one thing they will not be able to do is paint the surface, because you have to allow the asphalt time to off-gas before they paint it, and then the acrylic paint is very temperature-dependent, so that will have to wait till the spring. They have given the recreation committee some options, whether they want to put down temporary lines so people would be able to utilize it this winter, or maybe depending on, that decision doesn't have to be made right now. Depending on if it doesn't finish till very late in the season, they don't think it's gonna be used anyways, why pay for the temporary lines? So that can be more game time decision. But the bulk of the project will be done this fall. Regarding parking, what they have drawn, the parking will not be paved, it is to keep costs down on the project. They're putting in millings, and there was 14 additional parking spots that are going to go, it would be towards the street side, towards the Lakeview side of where the courts are going. But that was no, so basically, that's kind of a standalone project. It did not involve doing anything with the roadway that goes down to the beach or the existing COA parking spots. So I guess my suggestion would be, if, as Mr. Townsend expressed, he'd like to see some type of overall, maybe parking assessment done or something, would be, I think we have a few players down there. We have the council on aging, we have the recreation department that's involved, is there, the ones that brought down the pickleball project, and then you have conservation that kinda lives next door. I think maybe a meeting of all the minds, just to see what future plans are, and maybe that way they can, there's an area, you know, they say, all right, this is kind of a blank area, maybe we can make that additional parking, or, so I think it would be in the best interest of the town, from my involvement, would be to bring everybody that's involved down there into a room, kind of, you know, get everybody's thoughts together on what their vision is for the area, and then we can at least have some direction. Because, you know, if we would jump into a parking law engineering right away, they may say, well, we're gonna use this area, and then, you know, Department X may say, well, no, we wanna do this with that. So I think it would kinda come to an engineer with an overall plan. I think that would be the best approach.
And that's my only concern. My only concern is once everything's, we've spent a lot of money down there buying the adjacent conservation property, building off the pickleball, and once everything's operating, well, we want everyone to be able to enjoy it, right? We certainly want our seniors to be able to continue to use the council on aging and be able to park close enough to the council on aging that they can, you know, it's not too long of a walk. So that's why I just think it would be a good idea to have some type of professionally drawn plan. And the only thing I would ask, when you mentioned the parking, I think when this was first brought up way back when, and this has changed a lot, so I may be wrong, there was gonna be some parking along the, when you pull in on the driveway, the council on aging's on the right, and the conservation property's on the left, there was gonna be some parking along that fence. Has that parking gone away, or...
That was just a discussion, it was, nothing was ever formalized. It was a discussion, looking at it, saying, yes, there probably is enough room here, we could clear some brush back, and people could park parallel with the roadway on the left side going down to the beach.
Okay.
Still could be looked at, and that may be one of our options.
Okay, 'cause I thought, and again, I know a lot of things have changed, I thought, I mean, in the past, when there have been events at the council on aging, people have parked over there, but it's sort of random parking, just pulling over on the side of the road, and I thought I had heard that there was gonna be some clearing, and then we were gonna bring some millings, I think that's the proper word, but sort of make a hard pack where it was more, more uniform parking over there.
And that's a good option, but I think that's something also we wanna see, being good neighbors to our own conservation, whatever their intent's on that area, 'cause there is a fence in there that I believe they've expressed they want to come down, so there's some things to look at. But I think there's definitely options to expand on the parking, even with the additional 14 that are going in.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, Mr. Seidenhoff and his crew, they have actually cleared back the brush there along the roadway. People do park there, there's no formal parking spaces, there's no paint on the ground there, designated, but I was just at an event at the COA, there were three or four cars parked along the side of the road there, a parallel park to the road like Mr. Seidenhoff was talking about. So I do think a good plan, you know, Connie and Dave and I, we had a brief discussion about the COA parking lot and the condition of that parking lot, and her clients that utilize that space now, walking into her facility, and at that point, I recommended to her, she should probably think about having a capital project just to repave hers. If I look down at the beach right now, the beach parking lot's in pretty tough shape, you know, and I also think that beach parking lot could benefit from having some paint, because people aren't, they're kinda parking all over the place, really, quite honestly, you know. So a little bit of order there, you probably maximize that space. And then if pickleball doesn't have paved parking, you know, maybe we should talk about that, too, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, and I think that's the point. The point is we've spent so much money, and it really is coming together as a nice sort of community area down there. But if the parking is not somehow formalized, then, you know, you could have issues with people not being able to use it, and that's my only concern.
Mr. I?
So I guess what's the next step? Who will schedule the meeting? Who should take that as an action?
Yeah, I'll put that together.
To schedule the meeting?
Yeah, we'd like to have a meeting there, so we could actually, you know, see the site.
Sure.
Do a site visit as well, if that works.
Well, yes, I agree, but they also, the department heads may also need to have a meeting with Mr. Cannon, just...
We can also have a pre-meeting.
Right. Take a look.
Like I say, COA Director, Seidenhoff, myself, we already had a brief meeting, so we're involved recreation, we're involved the...
Conservation.
Conservation.
Yeah.
And then bring in the logic group. You know, I think one thing being with the pickleball, I'm not a pickleball player, I hear it is very popular, so, you know, having it open this winter, you might get a good idea of whether 14 spaces are enough, you know, so we might have some better idea on that, and, you know, then be able, if we get into the spring and we do have a capital project, you know, if we have to expand it, you know.
Well, the one thing I'll say, I drive by the pickleball courts in Plymouth a lot, and they're full. There's a lot of people playing pickleball, so I would anticipate a lot of people playing down there.
So just one more quick question, if I may, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Seidenhoff, when you drive, the 14 spaces are going to go sort of behind the COA, facing the COA?
Correct, so if you, when you drive past the COA parking lot, which would be on your right, a little further down the hill, before where the existing tennis courts were, which basically the pickleball courts are going to go on the exact footprint the tennis courts were, in between the COA parking lot and there. We do, there is a buffer zone there, because that is where the septic field is.
Okay.
So we're also squeezing in the deck, which was an approved APA project, which is going to begin shortly.
Good, yeah, so that's where you're gonna have that, those 14 spaces.
Mm-hmm.
That's great, thank you.
So, how many pickleball courts are going in?
Six. Six, okay, I was in trouble, six or eight?
Six. And we talked about 14 spaces for pickleball, we're not losing any spaces for the council on aging right now, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And do you have any, even like preliminary diagrams of just like what's going where, just to send out?
I do, I do. I don't, I apologize, I don't have them, I do have an electronic version.
That's fine, if you can send it to the TA, he can.
Yep.
I'm just curious visually, just to see what the idea is.
Sure, yep, I'll send that, Tim.
All right, is there anyone else like to speak on the plans? I see we have other individuals working on the project, no? Okay.
Just one more, I just thought of one more thing, so I'm pretty sure Fesson O'Neill drew up some very preliminary plans, maybe in 2020, 2021, is that?
For the pickleball?
Mm-hmm, for parking and so on.
For parking, that, I can't, I'm not sure, Mrs. Hewens, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I don't have that answer. I know on the electronic plans I have, when this project began, that's the ones I have that show the parking. Whether anything was done prior, I was not involved in.
That's okay, thanks.
All right, any questions? Nothing? Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
All righty, next item on the agenda, a vote to set the, vote to set and approve early voting schedule for the upcoming general election. Steve, we have the town clerk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the state has just let us know this week that we have the ability to reduce the hours for the very first week of in-person early voting. We're gonna have two full weeks of early voting, with two Saturdays included, 12 hours total on the weekends. My big concern is that we need to do pre-processing for this election, it's gonna be really big, with the vote by mail being so popular, being my second presidential election, we did it with the first one, and realize now that we really need to do that pre-processing. So, I know the primary wasn't as popular, we had some days that only five people came in to vote, you still have to staff it for the day, the ladies sit down there and they get to read some books, it's good for them for that, but I need my teams, and I need that money that we have set aside, to pay my teams to do the pre-processing. We're looking at probably about 30 to 35 hours of extra labor to do the pre-processing. So that means every ballot that comes by mail, the ones that we get for the early voting in person, we would be processing them, and those ballots aren't taken to the election. So they're run through the tabulators ahead of time, on a separate card, which is set aside, the ballots never go to the election, we take the card with us to the election, and we run both sets of cards at the end of the night and tally together the totals to get the results. It works really well, we did it, done it successfully before, but it's very labor-intensive, and we're looking at from, you know, starting now until probably November 20th, we're still gonna be dealing with this election, so we're gonna be working night and day to try to get to it. So what I'm asking for is Saturday, the 19th, to be open from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM for six hours, which is what's mandated by the state, and then...
That's Saturday, October.
That's Saturday, October 19th, yes, October 19th, 'cause I do have people coming in now looking for ballots already, so, right after the election, we did. Monday, the 21st, we'd like to be open from 9:00 to 1:00, that's four hours, and then Tuesday, the 22nd, we'd like to be open from 1:00 PM to 6:30 PM, 'cause that gives our voters that wanna come later on a Tuesday night, the ability to come and vote, and that's five and a half hours. And then Wednesday, 9:00 to 1:00, again, for four hours, and then Thursday, 9:00 to 1:00. We're gonna use the Friday as a setup time, so that we can start setting up for our pre-process teams.
So there will be no voting on...
On the Friday, the four-hour day. We're gonna use that to get our stuff together and get set up. It's only reducing the hours for that week by 11 and a half hours, we're still gonna be open for 23 and a half hours. The following week is a full week, starting on Saturday, again, Saturday, the 26th, is the last day to register to vote, so we're open for eight hours that day for last day to register, and for voting, we'll be open for six hours from 9:00 to 3:00.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may, so, the last day to register, what are those hours precisely?
So, the last day to register is 9:00 to 5:00, and that's on Saturday, the 26th.
Okay.
And then the hours to vote would be 9:00 to 3:00 that day. That's the other, required six hours for the weekend. And then Monday through Friday would be regular town hall hours, so it gives us a total that week of 41 hours. So in total, for all...
I'm sorry, so the regular town hall hours being 8:00 to 4:00?
8:00 to 4:00, and then on Tuesdays, 8:00 to 7:00, and on Friday, 8:00 to 12:00. So it's a grand total of 64 and a half hours of early in-person voting. All that we're shaving off of it is 11 and a half hours. And it's gonna save us money on having to staff it, so that we have that revenue to pay for our teams to come in to help with the pre-processing. So, that's my proposal for that, that's what's probably gonna work best for us.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
I just wanna repeat the hours to make sure the public hears it.
Would you like to make a motion and include the hours, so we don't do it twice?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve. The following hours for early voting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Saturday, October 19th, 9:00 to 3:00, Monday, October 21st, 9:00 to 1:00, Tuesday, the 22nd, 1:00 to 6:30, Wednesday, the 23rd, 9:00 to 1:00, Thursday, the 24th, 9:00 to 1:00, Friday, October 25th, is setup time.
Yep.
So there will be no early voting?
So no early voting on that Friday.
There will be no voting that Friday, okay.
Yep, that Friday, yep.
Saturday, October 26th, is the last day to register, and the hours to vote that day is 9:00 to 3:00. Monday, the 28th, the hours are 8:00 to 4:00, Tuesday, the 29th, the hours are 8:00 to 7:00, and Saturday, the 30th, the hours are 8:00 to 12:00. Did I have that right?
8:00 to 4:00 on the 30th, yep.
Oh, 8:00 to 4:00 on the 30th?
8:00 to 4:00, yep.
Sorry. Good thing we checked.
And you'll be posting this on the town's website?
Oh, I'm gonna post it, yeah, it's gonna go everywhere, it'll be on all the Facebook sites and on the town website, and I don't think we're gonna get it on our signboard, but it will say "early voting," and we're already getting calls, so, you know, during the day, people reach out to us, and we do word of mouth and get the message out there, so.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other questions, issues or concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the early voting hours, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
Thank you.
You're all set. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is a request to approve the amended subordination agreement relative to the Carver LLC solar facility. Do we have the assessor here?
Mr. Chairman, the assessor's at a board meeting right now, he's being delayed. If we could take this out of order, maybe move up Mr. Bott. I see he's here.
Sure.
Talking about electric rates.
Next item involves the town planner, Mr. Bott, this is an update on the electrical rates.
I think I pushed the right button for this one. Maybe moving targets.
Mr. Bott, just please use that mic, thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Tom Bott, I'm the town planner here in Carver, Mass, to talk a little about electricity. So as you may know, the town of Carver entered into an electrical aggregation program, where we buy electricity for the entire town, and people get to opt into it. You can opt in and opt out of the electrical aggregation on the town's website. So on the select board's website, we have the information about the community aggregation, and in that, it talks about the program, and it has the rates that are currently under, that we're currently under. So presently, the rate that we have for municipal aggregation is 15.784. That rate is good through November of 2025. Eversource's rates change twice a year. Right now, with the change in Eversource's rates, Eversource's rate is actually lower than the town of Carver's. That difference is, and I have to use my fingers for this, is .00014 dollars less. That effectively is a rate change of 34 cents for a family that has a large family, perhaps with an in-ground pool. This is an actual rate from someone I know who's a large family with an in-ground pool in Carver. So if they were to switch from our rate back to Eversource's, they'd save $34 a month, based on using 2,458 kilowatts. Two adults with a plug-in hybrid and a mini-split, who use significantly less electricity, that'd be me in another town, would save about 10 cents if they switched from the aggregation rate to the Eversource rate. And you're allowed to do this on a regular basis with no penalty. There is a spot on this same website for the town, that you can go in and change that rate, you just scroll down and put in your information, hit the button, and you get switched from one to another. Now, there are a number of folks out there who also offer lower rates, and they tend to flex. Some of those have a contractual agreement, and if you break the contract, you may pay a $125 fee for leaving early. So I just wanna make the point to people, if they want to change your rate, you can change it very effectively on the town's website, just by going to this and clicking on the box and changing the rate. You can, it's very fluid, you can change back or forth at any time, there's no obligation. And while 10 cents isn't a whole lot of money, or 34 cents a month isn't a whole lot of money, back in the day when we did an energy rebate or an energy audit at our house, which I recommend for everybody, also on Eversource's website, they can come out to your house and do an energy audit, and with that energy audit, they will give you advice on how you can make your house more energy efficient, how you can save money on installations and rebates and things like that. When we did ours, seven years ago, we were able to get a 0% interest on air-to-air mini-splits, that heat and cool, and the cost was $69 a month. And I mentioned this to my mother, I said, and it's 0% interest, and it was only an extra $69 a month, at which point she pointed out to me, not everyone has an extra $69 a month. So, while it is a great program, and there's a lot of opportunities, I'm sensitive to the fact, because my mother is so wise, my late mother is so wise, to know that every penny counts for folks. So in the event that you're looking at saving a modest amount of money, you can go to the website and simply change from Eversource to someplace else. There are a number of vendors out there, there are a number of very good vendors out there, there are a number of sketchy vendors out there, and we hear about scams all the time. So I recommend looking into that if you want to, through those proper channels, don't sign a contract for something unless you're willing to live with it for a year and a half. When we did the aggregation, usually the rates are a little longer than 18 months, but with the attack of the Russians in Ukraine, the market went crazy with oil, and you didn't really know what the future was holding, so we only bought an 18-month rate. So in a year, we'll be back and looking at those rates again, what they might happen to be. But my point for tonight is, you can save some money if you switch from the Carver rate to the Eversource rate, you can do it on the website, there's no obligation, you can switch back and forth as often as you like, and save a little money. I just didn't want people to look at their rate and see that it went up, and then lock into something that's gonna cost them perhaps more time and money. If you get a great rate for 18 months, go for it, but just be aware of early dismissed or early opt-out charges, and happy to take any questions that the board might have.
Mrs. Hewens?
Thank you. So, Mr. Bott, if we, didn't we discover that if we go with Eversource, though, their rates fluctuate over periods of time, whereas the community aggregation rates don't, they stay the same? So sometimes Eversource is a lot more expensive?
Yeah, so Eversource has to buy, go out to bid twice a year for electricity at the exact same time, and the marketplace knows that. So, you know, they know that they're gonna have a giant customer coming, so what's their incentive to be competitive? their incentive to be competitive? In the case of municipal aggregation, we don't go out to bid at the same time that ever-source does, which is usually that twice a year in January, in June. So, the whole concept of the aggregation is, you have a group of buyers, and you get to look at the marketplace when no one's- when- sort of off-peak times. And so, aggregations typically happen off the states of ever-source, because everybody knows nobody has an aggregation at the same time as ever-source, so you get ever-source's rate. So, our rate currently is 18 months. We've done them before for longer periods of time. But because of the uncertainty, and frankly, the difference in the rate we were paying previously and the new rate, we opted for a shorter 18-month timeframe, in order to just get a better rate, lock it in, and go back next time around.
Thank you.
Any questions on the board?
Nope.
It's clear.
No. I'm not blaming this deal or anything, but I, like everyone else, because I've had AC on quite a bit this summer, looking at my rates, looking at what I'm paying, obviously everything went up. The 15.784, and again, when you look at a utility bill, there seems to be- I didn't look at it before I came to this meeting, but there's usually like 15 or 16 line items. This is a- this is a usage rate? Is that my correct terminology?
Correct. So, the big ones are usage and delivery. So, the usage rate changes. The delivery rate does not. The delivery rate is always through ever-source, because they own the poles, and their distribution charge is always through them. The difference is in the generation fee. So, that generation fee, that likely first of those 15 different rates on your bill, show the kilowatt-hours for generation. When, you know, deregulation came in with utilities a few years back, ever-source was both a producer and a deliverer of electricity. Now, they're just the deliverer. They don't actually produce electricity, they just deliver it. So, that rate is always going to be the same for distribution. That doesn't change, just that top line for generation.
Okay.
And it will say ever-source, it'll say Carver AG Aggregation, or it will say, you know, one of the other vendors, if you happen to have them on your- if you happen to opt for somebody else.
And I haven't really looked at the detail of my bill for months, but I think I looked at it a few weeks ago. And I think I also see charges coming through, and again, nothing to do with this, for maybe net metering and solar costs. So, that's something that's just common with the industry, you know?
As I understand, those aren't things you get to opt out of.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just- you know, I never noticed it before, there were a lot more line items, and obviously when your bill starts going, you have to start examining it more.
Yeah, you have some flexibility on the generation rate, but everything else is the same, unless you just-
Sure.
-turn off the lights and stay outside.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for coming up. We don't take questions to a certain point, but you can ask the town planner a question when they leave, if you want.
Thanks.
Nope. When he leaves. You're all set? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bott.
Thank you, Mr. Bott.
What's next? Electric rates, and let's see, the assessor's not here. Okay.
Personnel code?
Yep. I'll get it right now. All right. So, next item up on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote to modify the personnel code, Section 25-0, personnel records. And just to give you one an update, I've asked the TA to look at this, as well as our- I want to call him HR General Counsel, is that all right? Is that the right terminology?
Labor-
Labor Counsel? To turn around and say, you know, what access or what rights or whatever does the Board of Selectmen have to look at employees' personnel files? And right now, in the current code, am I reading this right? It states, ah, "Release of information. No information shall be released unless written authorization received from the employee." So, that just seems to be, from an extreme standpoint, that we, being the board, would never see a personnel file, if the employee does not. An employee that maybe there's a performance problem, won't give authorization to see a file, and maybe an employee that is a fantastic employee, still doesn't want someone to see their file for whatever reason. And it just seemed to be this something that we should look at, correcting, to see what is the best practices approach for looking at personnel files, should the board have a concern. I mean, I'd open up any- any members feel like they have any comments to make on that, or?
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Ewens?
Mr. Cannon, through you, Mr. Chair. Didn't we get a discussion from Labor Counsel about this in an email?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And wasn't the suggestion essentially that we probably shouldn't want to- wouldn't do- shouldn't do this, because it could open us up to other legal issues?
He wanted us to put limitations on access to the records. There is a way to go about what Mr. Carter was talking about, but again, there are just limitations. Primarily to kind of ask permission, you come into town administrator's office, you view the file in my presence, and the file doesn't leave my office, essentially, to summarize.
Which goes to common practice. That seems to make sense. You know, you don't want- first of all, we don't want someone from the board, not that they would, to come into the office after hours, look at personnel files, make copies, and leave. Obviously, that's forbidden by region. Coming in, and I think that if we're signing a contract for someone, and it's based on prior performance, I talked to Counsel about this, and they said that we have the right to look at a personnel file, to see what's in it and the good and the bad. Do we, the board, have the right to walk down and say, "I want to pick an office, I want to see their personnel file?" No. You can't do that, you know? And I'm just saying, we need to memorialize. This seems to be too restrictive, when we can't look at any files at all for no reason whatsoever. So, I guess my suggestion would be for the town administrator to work with, unless someone has any other suggestions, to work with Counsel, to come up with a best practices approach that can resolve issues when the board has questions about performance.
Yeah, that was going to be my suggestion, that we come up with some language that we can- we can vote on to update the policy at some point in the future.
If I may, I guess my problem with this is I- the town administrator does have access to the personnel file, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So, I think that, in my opinion, having been an employee formally, it seems to me that that should be something between the employee and the town administrator, who's their boss. I personally don't feel the need to look at someone's personnel file to know what's going on. I find it very invasive. Even- and this is not meant in any offensive way-
True. Not taken.
Yeah, no, I know your intent is good. But it just concerns me, maybe for future boards, I can think of some past boards as well, where this would definitely not have been a good idea. And I think it's to stay- I mean, if the bylaw read, "No one can read it," that would be one thing. But the town administrator can look at it, and the town administrator typically handles issues, you know, that- sensitive issues like that, that come up, and then shares it with us through Counsel, if necessary. Just to me, it feels like that's sufficient, bearing in mind all kinds of possibilities that could happen if we do this.
Mr. Ryan?
I haven't really been involved in, like, municipal human resources, but I just, you know, coming from the corporate world, I think we try to ensure that there are good goals that are set. So, maybe the board could look at making sure that, at least from some level, goals are being set for people, because, you know, they're being measured against those goals, I would hope. And at the end, there should be reviews that are done, and, you know, in the corporate, sometimes we do them twice a year, like, six months and 12 months. And you, you know, you have those established goals, you do the review, and then people get a rating based on the review. So, at least from a board's perspective, we should maybe ensure that that's happening at a minimum. And then, I would think maybe a summary report, not with names. I mean, you could take a look at, you know, that the goals were set, and we had, you know, 20% didn't meet those goals, 60% did, and, you know, say, 20% were above, you know, the expected. So, maybe in summary like that, as long as we know that that's taking place. And then, I think the other two parts of that are making sure that we are rewarding and giving incentives to people that are going above and beyond, as well as putting plans together for those that may need some assistance in maybe meeting their goals, maybe training and things like that. So, I would think as a board, I mean, at a minimum, we'd want to be making sure that the goals are being set annually, they're being reviewed annually, and this thing's happening. I mean, if we get that report, and we know that that's happening, that probably would be good to have in practice.
Yeah. And that would be a general, overall evaluation done by the TA?
Yeah, it's not looking at individuals, it's general.
Right. And so, that would mean that, for example, department heads- department heads would be making the review of employees, their employees, but the town administrator would be reviewing the department heads?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that, I think, is not a bad idea, personally. I just don't want to do something that feels extremely invasive and could bite us down the road. Yeah.
Correct.
I agree. I agree a lot with what Mr. Ryan had to say. I think there are ways of crafting this, so that we could see some type of synopsis of what goes on. I mean, because I can see both sides, that there is the opportunity for abuse, but then again, we are asked to vote on a lot of contracts, and it would be nice sometimes, before we vote on those contracts, to see some additional information, so. I think there are ways of working with Counsel, I think the crafts of language, that we could probably find some common ground on.
Yeah, and I think that that would- the implication of doing it that way, the way Mr. Ryan suggested, would kind of, I think, give more confidence in the town administrator, that, you know, he's doing his- it's more respectful, he's doing his job, and we just want to know that everyone's doing their job.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's see, we've got on the agenda, does anyone want to make a recommendation or a vote to have the TA, who's heard comments tonight, were going to propose modification of the personnel code?
I would just make a- I don't even think we need technically a motion. I would just recommend that we ask the TA to go back and meet with whoever he feels- town council, whoever he feels he needs to meet with, to craft some language and bring it to a future meeting for a vote.
Feel comfortable with that?
Yeah. The language like Mr. Ryan suggested.
Is that the direction of the board, to what Mr. Ryan's-
Yeah, I think that's a good starting point, but, you know, other ideas, we'll add at our next meeting. We'll vet it at the next meeting, if you have any other. You might come up with other options from Counsel.
Right, right.
So, maybe in the minutes, next time, if you can capture the bullets of the items I covered, then we can review those with you and see if those can get incorporated in.
Yeah, Counsel may even have already discussed this with other towns. There may be language out there that exists that works for us, so.
And just to be clear, I mean, I've had general conversations with Counsel that said a typical employee personnel file has three components. It has a payroll component, which is obviously down the payroll division, it has a health component that we should never see, and then there's a personnel component. And in his comments is that typically that when there's a contract renewal, that's typically times when the board would possibly ask for it. It's not to come in and search for things, so.
And again, my concern is that this board would behave, you know, professionally, but-
But future boards.
Right.
And I guess the one thing I would add is, I do think that this language should contain some type of restrictions on where that file is reviewed, probably in the town administrator's office with the town administrator, or something similar.
So, is the motion to ask the town administrator to look into the suggestion that Mr. Ryan put forward?
Yeah. I don't think it's a motion. I think it's just sort of-
A recommendation.
A recommendation from the board, that's all.
And like, this chair, this chair. You know, one thing about having Labor Counsel, right, they do work for multiple towns, I don't even know how many towns they cover. And this may have come up in another town, they may have language all set.
We're not thinking about anything new, there must be a, you know-
Yeah, I'm sure we're not breaking new ground here.
Okay.
All right. Let's see. Next up on the agenda-
If we can go back to the 6:58?
Oh, sorry, Joe's here. Great. Next, so we'll go back to the request for the approval of the amended subordination agreement relative to Sankatha, I'm saying that right, Carver LLC solar facility.
Hi, how are you guys doing? I'm Joe Roach, I'm the town assessor. Just here to provide some context with what we're asking for. So, at the 2023 town meeting, the town approved a pilot agreement between the town and Carver LLC, which is over on Tremont Street. As part of that pilot agreement, we put in our pilot agreements a UCC lien, which gives us a security interest in the panels, in the event that the developer defaults, or goes bankrupt, or whatnot. We have some way to guarantee our interest in the property and the panels.
Mr. Roach, did you say what kind of lien?
A UCC. It's a corporation lien.
Okay.
So, it's- it goes back to real estate. If you look at real estate, and you don't pay your property taxes, the treasurer can put your property in tax title, do a tax-taking, and eventually go to foreclosure. Personal property is an unsecured collectible.
Okay.
So, there is no way to lien personal property, and there's no way to guarantee that it's collected. So, this is one of the primary reasons why pilots are so beneficial to the town, because it provides not the guaranteed protection of real estate, but it provides somewhere between none and some, you know, it provides some protection. The lender, to get these financed and built, the lender won't let you take the lien of first position. So, we subordinate the town's interest-
What does that mean?
Where if the developer did go bankrupt, the developer, or the financer, you know, whoever the money company was, would have the lien of first order, and then the town subordinates its collection rights to the financer.
To?
Whoever the lender is.
Okay.
So, it's better than nothing. It's better than if it was taxed as regular personal property. We still have a lien on the panels. It's just our lien is slightly below that of the person fronting the money. So, currently, we have a subordination agreement in place. This is the same exact subordination agreement, it's just changing the name of the lender, changing the date that it's entered into, changing Robert Fennessey's name on it to Glenn Cannon's name on it. Really, it's updating the dates, the names, and that's really it. So, it's the same agreement. I've reviewed it, the boards had their attorney review it. It's typically the same- it's the same agreement, has the same protections, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions from the board?
Sorry, I already asked mine.
No, it's okay.
So, it's not like we're dropping from first position to second position? We were always in second position?
Correct.
Right. And if something like this was to happen, and the, I guess, developer went bankrupt, the financing company wants to come in and get their- it's a collateral, they want to get whatever they lent back. So, do you envision, without graving in stone, that really there won't be any money left if a financier comes in and says, "I want my collateral back"? Is it generally more than what's available to the town, so we wouldn't see anything, really?
I guess, you know, it all depends on probably where you are in that 20-year period. You know, if you're year one in the cycle, and they haven't paid any of their debt back, then, you know, the town probably wouldn't get anything back, which they wouldn't get if it was straight personal property either. If you're year 10, 15, and they've paid down that debt, you know, maybe it's personal property, you know?
So, really, what they would come in and say, "I'm foreclosing," they'd walk in and pull all the panels and all the equipment and everything out, to go put it someplace else?
Yeah.
Whatever money we collected is ours, they're not going to want to give it back, based on the way around the cycle.
Exactly.
And we lose the future.
You've collected the money. It's- once you've collected, there's no ability for them to apply for abatement, there's no ability to issue a refund. These are manually generated bills in the correct amount that's in the contract. So, there is no abatement or refund provision in the pilots. The only way a pilot amount would be altered is if an act of God knocked out half of your panels for six months, and they weren't able to produce.[1762.23] panels for six months and they weren't able to produce, the pilot would be reduced to account for what's still remaining, if any.
So the only change in this is just the financing company?
Exactly.
And then you decided that we got to change the names?
This is like remortgaging a house, you know, you do a new mortgage and a new mortgage is recorded, it doesn't, doesn't really change anything, it's just changing the lender's name.
So, so the only I request is in the future, because I started reading through this thing and I was ready to, it was long, and, uh, that, that any contract we get, and this is the town administrator as well, that it come to us redlined so we can see exactly what's changed versus having to look at the old and look at the new one and try to find the changes.
Of course, yeah. No, I can do that next time.
Great, good. Uh, all right, so would anyone like to make a motion?
I have one more question.
Nope, she wants?
Okay, so, no, I just want, you said that the only way, um, that we lose if they default would be?
Well, I, I guess it's all really a hypothetical.
That's okay.
There's lots of different scenarios that could, could be out there, um, you know.
So typically if they default, we don't lose because we have that provision?
If they defaulted without a pilot, let's say whoever it is goes out of business, a personal property bill is going to hang out there for a number of years uncollected until the treasurer collector requests that it be written off.
Okay.
And then it's done through an abatement and paid for out of the overlay.
Okay.
So it's, just gets written off, it never gets paid by that owner. With this, it attempts to create some sort of security interest, so you get some payment. It, it goes back to the fact that personal property is unsecured, so it's really, is it a good home run of a lien?
No.
It's better than nothing at all.
Okay.
And there are no better options, you're basically saying this is our best option?
Correct, and the reason why you haven't seen these before is because this provision wasn't built into previous pilots, so you'll start seeing these probably fairly often and it's going to be the same thing, there's two types of developers, developers who build the project and hold it for twenty years, and then there's developers who build it and flip it and, you know, it's just bought by funds who keep flipping it, so this is the first one, as we do more of these, it's probably going to become second nature and it will happen more often.
Okay. Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the amended subordinate agreement.
A second. We have a motion, we have a second, any other questions, issues, concerns, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose zero, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, the, uh, American, update on the American Rescue Act Plan.
It's your plan act.
What?
American Rescue Plan Act.
Never mind.
Okay.
Okay, so for the American Rescue Plan Act funding, um, we have put a lot of projects through to Plymouth County for approval, um, they have their looming deadline of September thirtieth for everything to be submitted and paid. So I'm just going to go ahead and go through the detail on this. So for Plymouth County funds, we were allocated the two million dollars, um, we also added back in the North Carver Water District membrane amount, um, we completed projects and got reimbursed for seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. And I want to point out at the top of our list, we have the town hall conference room, this has been completed for some time, it's submitted for some time, and we are not sure what's going on with Plymouth County as far as, um, why it's taking them so long to kind of go through our projects and approve them for reimbursement, uh, some are at level two, some are at level three, um, you can see on my next project, the Fiber Loop, um, we knew that was not going to get approved in, in the normal Plymouth County submission, so we put it through as revenue replacement, we still have not heard on that, uh, that bas, that basically just means there's, uh, less criteria it has to go through to get approved. So, um, with these two large projects, uh, we are a little concerned, so our goal with this, um, or our plan for this, I should say, is that Glenn and I are going to reach out to Tom O'Brien to find out, um, if for some reason these don't get approved, um, and we don't have the federal funding to, uh, back up the amounts, um, can we then just get the money reallocated to another project? So we're going to work this week, reaching out to Plymouth County, finding another project, um, to see if we can, uh, just have a backup plan in place. So, um.
Do we, do we have another project to reallocate that money to if we find out that there's an issue?
Uh, we are working on that.
No, we're not.
There's nothing placed.
We haven't been rejected by Plymouth County yet, so, but we're just concerned that it seems to be taking them.
Those have been out there a long time.
Yes, very long time.
You would think if there was an issue, they would have rejected it by now.
Yes, and same thing with the EOC training room, I think there was a little delay on wrapping that up, so that just got submitted more recently, uh, but we, although, you know, we, we did put a lot through, that one point one million, we, we pushed all of our projects through, um, even if we don't have all the receipts, we just want it in their system, even if it's just, um, partially completed, um, and for example, on this decommissioning of the twenty-two private wells, um, the anticipated completion is September thirtieth, um, of course with the meter pit, we know that won't be done on time, but we have Middleborough's timeline on what they want to complete when, so we're reaching out to them to see if we can get any invoices to put in.
Have we heard any updates on that at all?
So we do have, I did not bring it with me, I do have it on my desk, um, their timeline for, um, their checklist on what has to be completed when for the meter pit. So that.
Can you send that to the board?
I can, and I believe it's going, the completion date for that is December thirty-one.
Thank you.
So through the chair, if, so if those projects did not get approved, then where do we get the funding to cover the costs?
So there are options, one option is a transfer from reserve fund.
Okay.
Well, we haven't got there yet, so we still have been holding back.
Federal money?
Federal money, and hold it back almost for this specific purpose, so we're holding on to that federal money.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
We'll just use these two projects as an example, the two eleven and the one fifty-two. If we were to, uh, not get the funds approved through revenue replacement, that would still leave us, I want to say about fifty-five thousand. Right, in, uh, actually.
That is one of the things, so they're normally pretty responsive on those things, I wonder if there's just a miscommunication there or.
Nineteen thousand.
Somehow it slipped on their behalf or something like that.
So if we added that, uh, revenue, I'm sorry, the, uh, the Fiber Loop under revenue replacement, if that does not get approved and we take it out of our federal funding, that would still leave us about twenty thousand in federal funding.
Am I wrong in saying that the fiber got kicked back once already? Oh, no.
Under the regular Plymouth County submission, so we resubmitted under revenue replacement, which has less criteria it has to meet.
And is that, is that federal, has fewer criteria?
That's under Plymouth County, Plymouth County has allocated us a little over four hundred thousand.
Okay.
Uh, in funds that can be used for revenue replacement.
Okay.
So, uh, we have the Fiber Loop in there, um, and the other thing we've put through is, uh, the police funding for new hire training, um, and the reason for that is, uh, that will definitely not get accepted through Plymouth County because they are, it's a reimbursement grant and it hasn't happened, so he would have to incur the overtime and expenses into his budget first, so, um, we are going to put that through under revenue replacement. The other thing we are anticipating not getting approved is the electric vehicle for inspections and assessing.
Why?
Well, we're trying to get it through for Board of Health, um, but the one for inspections and assessing, it's not for public health, I don't think it would fall under any of their qualifying categories.
Maybe, um, the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission?
So the Board of Health, we did on their own on purpose because we feel, um, the health agent, you know, could, you know, be, be, uh, have that communication with the public or the accessibility to the public, um, with their own vehicle, if there was a public health crisis, they would be able to get out and.
Yeah, that's probably the better one, but conservation also, it, you know, protects the environment, so that's public health.
So I, we just have to go by what their criteria is.
Right.
And what would meet their criteria, so, um, originally I think we had grouped these together, then we split them out because we, we kind of saw that coming, based on the other things they had approved, and ironically, I, I want to say ninety percent of these projects went in front of Plymouth County prior to this to make sure, so it could just be, you know, they, they usually come back, you know, if it's our wording, they'll say, can you reword this, and we do, so, um, it's a tough audit process that goes through, which is good.
Yeah, it's just a little more concerning because we're getting so close to the deadline.
Yeah. So, um, anything that's water-related, that is, that's not reimbursement, that should go right through, I think right now, the issue is, you know, all these are outstanding, we're not sure what the delay is on Plymouth County's end as far as it getting approved and us getting that reimbursement.
What feedback are you getting back from them?
We haven't gotten any, we don't know if it's just because it's so close to their deadline, maybe they're inundated, we're not really sure, but we'll find out, we'll contact them. As far as what's still in process, uh, we have that Carver Middle High School Mechanical System for Better Air Quality, that is the one, we, uh, did reach out to Tom O'Brien and have a conversation with him, and he very kindly waived the extension for that project because it is in the school and they will need to, um, do it at, you know, off hours or just school vacation weeks, it is just going to inherently take longer. Uh, the municipal well corrosion, um, is delayed because there were no bids received at the bid opening on September tenth, so the state procurement process, um, says that you have to then go out to bid again, and then if the second time you don't receive any bids, as long as it's all documented, then you can choose a vendor. So unfortunately, that will be delayed. Uh, the purchase of the, uh, other inspections vehicle, we are just, um, awaiting a contract on that, we're in the process of doing that. Um, the Council on Aging Deck, um, was budgeted for ninety thousand, um, a bid came in and we are now contract, well, we're in the process of contracting this week, uh, for seventy-five thousand two hundred, which is great news, uh, that also leaves us room for any change orders up to ninety thousand. So hopefully we're going to get that contract executed this week and hopefully they'll start the work soon. The generator, again, we're still awaiting that installation date, um, and then the, for the database for the police, um, the invoice is being processed this week, so that should be in Plymouth County's system next week, ready to be approved. So we're very close, we're getting there, unfortunately, these are unforeseen delays with the bidding process, with contractors, I know we talked about the middle high school mechanical system prior, that they were trying to save the town money by buying the parts separately and contracting out work, and then they found out they couldn't do that, so, um, yeah.
I guess through the chair.
Sorry, Mr. Ryan.
Of the two point one million that we had allocated, how much is in jeopardy right now roughly?
Well, when you say in jeopardy, uh, so it's one point five million outstanding, it is the project's pending approval and the project's in process, um, we do have, I want to say it's over three hundred thousand for the meter pit, um, anything with the water, the corrosion of the wells, all that stuff, that's water, so the, the water projects are not reimbursement, it's just a matter of Plymouth County making sure, you know, all the boxes are checked off, all the procurements there and everything.
Right, and you mentioned some of them may have to shift to the federal side, and then that would, of course, leave room in there, do we have, and you're looking to line something up for, you know, if that were to happen, we'd be able to get something submitted so that we keep moving forward?
Yeah, I hope so.
Using up, or as much as we can of the allocation for projects?
So we have time on the federal funding, right, if we do have to, um, if we do find out from Plymouth County that some of those projects won't get approved, that will fall to the federal funding, which that balance is two hundred and thirty-one right now, um, so.
So there's time on the federal, but we're running out of time on the county side, so you're going to do what we can just to overload that enough to cover in case something doesn't get approved?
So, Mr. Ryan, to be clear, the two we're concerned about is the town hall conference room.
Yes.
And the townwide fiber, fiber, those are the two that we're concerned about, the rest, we're confident are going to move forward.
Was there a vehicle one that we, you mentioned too, is that?
We moved out and already.
You already moved that one out?
Yeah.
Okay, to federal.
So those two items are three hundred and sixty-three thousand, that could potentially drop and not be covered by the federal.
You got a fifty-five thousand deficit right now, you're saying, of the projects? I mean, you've, you've over, you've overcommitted fifty-five.
Right.
So.
Potentially overcommitted.
Correct, and that's, that's good.
But, let me get this straight, you potentially overcommitted, but we need to spend the money, so if we did overcommit by fifty, it's got to come out of federal, right?
Correct.
The best case scenario is we go over by fifty.
Well, and the other thing we heard from the county is that, um, if they do have some excess funds because of, when they're trying to balance at the end, they may be able to cover that too, if we're, if we're over, and as a, you know, when they look across all the communities, they're going to do a rebalancing after the thirtieth and there's a potential we could get some of that funds.
Yep, and we'll be, uh, in their ear, letting them know, letting them know we want that money.
Okay, and you have some projects in mind that you're going to work on?
Uh, we're, we're going to meet this week.
Good.
And get on that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Sheun's.
So could you just remind us and the public again when the two deadlines are?
So Plymouth County's deadline for having, uh, all the, everything submitted to them is September thirtieth, um, they originally had their deadline of December thirty-first for project, for project completion, so I think that's.
September thirty-first.
I'm sorry, December.
Oh, okay.
December thirty-first, did I say September? Uh, and then the federal deadline, we have another year, actually, I think we have till twenty twenty-six on that.
It's modest, you know, the, on the federal side, it has to be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and spent before, uh, December tw- thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, so you have a lot more flexibility on the federal side than you do on the Plymouth County side.
But on the, the opera, we need to spend the money by September thirtieth unless we get the authorization to, like, for instance, with that HVAC for the school, they extend.
Correct.
For the Plymouth County project.
Plymouth County, yep. All right, thank you for the update. Next item on the agenda are town administrator updates.
Sure, a few things for you, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, one thing the board did ask about, uh, the PFAS in the North Carver Water District, uh, I want you to know that the, uh, the East Grove Street well in Middleborough, uh, did have a detectable PFAS reading, however, the third quarter test results show that the PFAS levels are below DEP limits, uh, so again, they did have a hit, they reduced the, the draw out of that well, I don't know if they went down to zero, but they reduced the draw out of that well, uh, and then, again, retested, came back with, with limits below the DEP standard, so, uh, you know, there is PFAS out there, um, but it's, you know, it's below the DEP limits for, for concern, so.
But the report you're looking at came from DEP?
Correct, well, actually, I got it from the town of Middleborough.
Okay.
Uh, I, I do want the residents to know that, you know, the, the select board certainly are, are concerned about the drinking water in the North Carver Water District, uh, I've heard, um, good things, uh, from the, the, uh, the customers over there about the, the quality of, of Middleborough, um, and the availability of, of water from Middleborough, um, so, you know, I think, again, there is, there is some concern there, but it's something that they can control, uh, and they are able to, uh, to regulate.
Okay.
Sorry, could I just interrupt for a sec, so, so the East Grove Street well in Middleborough had been closed down because it was above the DEP, um.
Level.
Level for it being okay drinking water, but now it's open again because it's, what they detected is below the, um, restricted level set by DEP.
Correct.
Okay, and there are no other wells above that, uh, DEP limit?
Correct, it was only that East Grove Street well in Middleborough.
Thank you very much.
And, and any well in Middleborough funds, uh, provides water for both Middleborough residents and the town of Carver.
Correct.
Mr. Ryan?
Just to follow on, is there a, for residents, is there a, uh, ability to get the reports? I mean, how often is it tested for PFAS and is it, is it readily available to monitor to see what the levels are each time it's, uh, it's, um, tested?
I'd have to look into that, I know we actually have some information on our website under the North Carver Water District, uh, page, you know, the, the latest test results are on our website right now.
Okay.
To actually, to get something more, um, what do you want to say, more dynamic, I don't know if you can go to DEP or not, I'm not sure.
Well, it's, yeah, so maybe if you can find out, I mean, I, if I'm a resident and I'm drinking the water, I mean, I'd want to know, how often is it tested and, uh, how do I get that information?
Yeah.
So if, if I would hope that DEP or somebody maintains that on a regular basis, like, is it tested every day, is it tested once a week, you know, and, uh, what is acceptable? Because it's, you know, I mean PFAS sounds awful.
Right, right.
So you want to, when they even say there's a regulated, a, a acceptable amount, that even sounds concerning, but I guess that's how they, they do it, but I'd be, I'd want to know on a regular basis what that is.
I, I do know every year we were required to do a water quality, our report. I do know every year, we were required to do a water quality, or report to all the residents there, they were, I believe they were mailed out to every consumer.
But if there is something available on a more regular basis, we should let residents know.
If there's monthly testing, we should...
If it's monthly, weekly, daily, you know, they should know.
DEP probably requires regular testing. I mean, this is an important subject, so...
I'd want residents to know how they can keep up on that information and...
Well, just so the board is aware, we did receive a Green Communities Grant. The total came to $147,789. It was informed by Mr. Bott that it was a real team effort to put all that together. There's a number of issues here, including LED lighting, weatherization, insulation at the COA, again, DPW Garage, the EMS Building, the maintenance bus garage for, and even Town Hall, so quite a few projects there and a large amount of money. The Fire Department did help, they held an Experienced Firefighters Dinner. I think this is important to recognize, the years of service that some of these people that put in here for the town. I'm going to apologize in advance because I butcher names on a regular basis, but I think it is important to read these out. There are, there are significant years of service here. Firefighter Chris Durrin, 20 years. Firefighter Billy Garnett, 20 years. Firefighter Matt Farquharson, Farquharson, sorry, 20 years. Captain Bill Frolick, 20 years. Firefighter Joe Kirk, 30 years. Captain Eric Weston, 35 years. Firefighter Steve Falconer, Faulkner, 35 years. Lieutenant Chris Mahoney, 35 years. And firefighter Mike Williams, 45 years. That's quite an achievement, so I think that's well-recognized there from the fire.
Thank you, all of them, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to let the folks know, you know, King Richard's Fair is coming into October here, it is going to become busier. You know, I want to encourage people, if possible, to seek alternate routes. And just to remind them also too, that, that our employees are doing the best they can to get people through up and, up and down Route 58 with, you know, the least amount of disruption as possible. So please, you know, let's be as courteous as possible to our, to our employees. I know it can be different, frustrating sometimes when you're stuck in traffic there. Going back to the North Carver Water District, we do have a joint meeting tomorrow. I really don't have too much of an update right there, I think we'll find out a lot more tomorrow night at that meeting. We will give out the construction timeline for the meter pit. There is some other information, I'll email you at the end of this meeting for the meeting tomorrow. It's mostly the existing agreements that we have in place, you know, between the Town of Carver and the North Carver Water District, just to, just so you can see those, the request for the Emergency Water Service from the North Carver Water District to the Town of Middleborough. You know, those things, just so you can review it before the meeting tomorrow, that's all.
And the meeting will be held here?
Yes, here at Town Hall, 6 o'clock. As far as the Town Administrator Goals, you know, we went over the the OPRA update. Again, we'll have a North Carver Water District meeting tomorrow night, so I think that's, you know, advancing. We have set up a timeline with the Finance Director for the fiscal '26 budget. We're getting, we're already starting into budget season, those will be happening and getting off the ground pretty soon. Had a discussion with department heads about succession planning. I need to finalize that, though, I need to sit down with each department head, make you, you know, get their plans together for that one. And then the last thing I do have to share with you tonight is, we do have our first-ever newsletter that I could distribute to the board. It hasn't gone public yet, that could happen tomorrow, but I do have a copy for each member, something to read tonight. A lot, I would say...
This is awesome.
Quite a bit of information on the very first one. Probably a lot of things that have been sitting out there for years, pretty easy, it was easy to gather, quite honestly, there's a lot of information that the calendar's put out. This is something we could put on our, on our website and on our Facebook page, try to get that out. We don't have a printing budget, so I will not be printing copies at this point anyways. But again, the first one, and I do plan on doing it monthly, you know, I think coming from the select board meetings, it's fairly easy to come up with material to put in there. Honestly, you know, we go through it a lot in our agendas, and I almost just, I don't want to say copy and paste from our agendas, it's put right into the newsletter, but some flows right from our meetings, most of them, all of it, that's really.
This is great.
And that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
I have a couple of questions.
Sorry, Mr. Ryan, you first.
Go ahead. So I was going to ask, is it possible, it's great to put on the webpage, but maybe is there a spot where we could paste the pages somewhere?
I'm sure I could put a few out.
Where people could be, you know, if they're gathering or they're in Town Hall, they might browse and read through it each month. You know, it's a public place. And then my other question on the succession planning was, I think it was in addition of the succession planning, it was just making sure there was backups, so that if there's key roles that people do, and they're not, not available, they're on vacation, that we identify that. It is part of a succession planning, but it's also saying that, you know, people who are here and they're, when they're not available, they're on vacation, are people cross-trained so that we can get information that we need instead of having to wait a week or two till they get back, or if they're, you know, out on a, you know, a leave or something like that.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great point. I mean, sometimes the department of wanted, you know, who picks up the phone when that department head is out or that employee's out? You know, again, who, who just even says, you know, the department head's out for this week and they go back to you Monday morning?
Right.
Sometimes that's all it takes.
Okay.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, just a couple of things. First of all, as far as the goals, I really think you were both doing an excellent job with the OPRA updates. These are great updates, much better than the previous updates we were receiving, so I appreciate the detail you go into on that, and thank you for this. I think this is a great job. I think the residents will appreciate that, so thank you very much.
And I will, I will not take credit for this, staff really stepped up to help me, they've embraced it. So I mean, I think that's a good thing.
Please pass my appreciation on to whoever needs, needs to hear that, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
There was another bullet item on the poll violation update, is that, are we skipping that, or were you going to cover that too?
No.
That was under the Town Administrator update?
Yeah, I thought that was the next agenda item, yes.
Oh, sorry, it's under the Town Administrator update, it was bulleted.
You want me to jump into it?
Sure.
Yeah, so council has drafted a letter. I will apologize to the board, I actually thought the board had directed council to write a letter for my signature, but I went back and looked at the minutes and, you know, it was a letter that council, for the board, would have got out to you sooner, again, it was on, just let you know. So again, we do have that letter, we sent it out to you for review, if we get a motion to look at it and prove it. If you have signatures on it tonight.
I reviewed it.
I filed it. Yep. That was well-written, yep. All right, anyone to make a motion?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Hewens.
I just have one point to make about this Town Administrator's Update, which is really wonderful. I just wanted to let the public know that the section that is about Community Health Needs Assessment, there's a survey that you can take by scanning the QR code and online, but in really tiny letters, it also says to have paper copies dropped off or to have an email sent to your organization or place of work, and then it has a contact, actual phone number to use for people who don't go online. So that's a nice, thank you.
All right, I think the next item, a topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chair within 48 hours in advance of a meeting. I think we do have an item?
I actually do have a request, Mr. Chairman. Cumberland Farms had reached out to us, they're concerned, they had requested the park on this Thursday, the 19th, they're concerned about the weather and the rain, they've asked to change that to October 3rd.
Which is a Thursday?
I think it's a Thursday, yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, questions, issues, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that request came in yesterday, so we didn't have time to put on the agenda.
That's fine. All right, next item on the agenda, a request for a one-day special license for the Carver Sportsman's Club on the 21st, 2024, between 4:00 PM and 8:00 PM.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, issues, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, zero. All right, next item on the agenda, select board announcements, I'll stop with Ms. Hewens.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to thank all the firefighters who were recognized by our Fire Department for all their years of service. They're part of what makes this a great town. I know that we have an on-call department, so these are folks who drop what they're doing and run when they hear the siren. And to have done that for 20-plus years is really incredible, so thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
I'd also like to echo that. Thank you to the firefighters, the many years of service, the volunteer, we have a really great volunteer department that serves Carver very well. And also, thanks, say thank you too for the newsletter, for everybody that worked on that, I think this is going to be great for everyone.
Definitely. Ms. Townsend?
And I will just echo the same thing. I had the names in front of me, I was going to read, I won't, I won't read them since the Town Administrator already did, but, but thank you to all our firefighters and all our public safety professionals for all they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to echo the same thoughts, and am I right in saying that one person had 45 years?
45 years.
45 years.
That's incredible. What's that person's name again, sorry?
Yeah, Mr. Williams, Mike Williams.
That's unbelievable. Also, a quick note, the Lions Club is having a charity golf tournament, I believe, on October 12th. It's for a run, it's a great cause, so anybody, I think there's still foursomes out there, so if anybody wants to join, they could probably find it on Facebook.
And also the Farmer's Market, I forgot to throw that into...
Farmer's Market as well.
Sundays, and Shane gives back.
And also, don't forget Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry.
Shane Gives Thanks.
Great. All right, our next meeting is scheduled, well, we've got a meeting tomorrow night,[1767.33]